I will mention that, but as we, but if they end up saying no, then we start fighting. We can't for at all. Because in the question, it's a we, you know, turn that orange here on the band and then before we're not coming, well, hey, it's on, then once they come back, they're still okay, they're like, I don't know why that TV is not.
This is four thirty-one.
Yeah, so like, I'm trying to use that, uh, if I did that, I think. They gave me like, I was like, I was just shy. I'm like, how is this thing being again? I don't know. It's like, it's like, I'm a big fan of the same.
Where's the shit?
She'll be on Zoom. Megan's out.
Good afternoon, everybody. Uh, today is May first, twenty twenty-three, and we are in a Salisbury City Council work session. Uh, immediately after the work session, we will move into a special meeting. And then, uh, after that meeting, we will move into a budget session. Uh, so at this time, we're gonna go ahead and just so everybody is aware, uh, Councilwoman Michelle Gregory is joining us by Zoom, but we don't have our video up, but she is present from what I understand. Michelle, can you hear me?
Uh, she is.
Okay. Okay. All right, so she will be joining us via Zoom. And so first up on our agenda is a resolution to approve the city's action plan for the community development block grant funds for the CDBG program year twenty twenty-three. And this will be our grants manager, Joe Ellenbaum. How are you doing today?
I am well. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Yes, um, you should have in with your packet a copy of the program year twenty twenty-three, um, action plan. And within that is described the projects, um, that we are putting forth. We have general administration in the amount of seventy-two thousand, seven seventy-one. Um, continuing the low moderate sidewalk improvements and pedestrian improvements, and that amount would be two hundred and twenty-two thousand, eighty-six dollars. Excuse me. And additionally, we would like to put a project in to fund a homeless services intensive case manager that would be part-time for nineteen thousand. And finally, some additional construction work at the Ann Street Village in the amount of fifty thousand. And that would total our allocation of three hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And just asking for your approval so that we can submit the action plan by the May seventeenth deadline.
Michelle is now available.
Okay. Michelle, any questions or comments? I will say it is a very thorough document. A job well done. Um, a, a very long read.
Yes, I apologize for that. There's not much latitude in it. It's a series of questions and have to answer all of them.
Understood. Uh, so is that, we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes, okay. We'll place this on Monday's agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next up is to, is a resolution to approve property transfers connected to the Community Development Projects Fund. We have a procurement director, Jennifer Miller, and Housing and Community Development Director, Ron Strickler. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everyone. We're seeking approval to move this forward to a legislative session. It's a resolution that cites the current municipal charter and code procedural regulations for the sale or other disposition of surplus obsolete or unused property. Uh, it does define the Community Development Project Fund. It provides public, public disclosure and requests approval of three property sale and transfers under the Community Development Project Fund. And then requests transfer permission or disposition of an additional property, five twenty-seven whales, under the Community Development Project Fund.
Questions or comments from the council on this?
No.
Any questions or comments, Michelle?
I have sent her a message. Um, we're having an audio issue. She's, she's having some connectivity issues that don't work with her on here.
Okay. So everybody okay with moving this forward?
Yes.
All right, we'll place this on Monday's agenda. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Uh, next up is an ordinance to amend the FY twenty-three general fund budget and the FY twenty-three water and sewer fund budget to appropriate additional funds for field operations. Asset and Facility Manager Jake Pavlyak, yes, how you doing today? Thanks for being here. All right, you have the floor, sir.
So Field Operations and Water Works are requesting funds from the surplus from this previous year, totaling twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents. Uh, the chart below specifies what was sold and how much that sold for.
I'm trying to scan to find that. I can't see it.
You have a CDBG document that is hundreds of pages long.
Correct. I, I can see that it's under page as long. What I want to get to is the
Oh, the items, uh, so.
What he's referencing to in regards to the chart.
Do you want my paper copy?
Is that one, one, seven, is that one, one, seven, page one, one, seven in R?
Uh.
No, it's not.
I have it just in my browser. I don't.
I just want to look at the numbers, that's all. I just want to re-
Yeah.
I've seen them once or twice. I just can't.
There you go.
Thank you. None.
Comments? Everybody okay with moving this forward?
Yes, thank you.
All right, we'll place this on Monday's agenda. Thank you. Have a great day.
I just want my choice, the right amount.
All right, uh, next up is an ordinance to amend FY twenty-three general fund budget to appropriate funds received, uh, from the recycling of scrap metal. So Deputy Director Sam Ireland. How you doing today?
All right, good afternoon. Um, the Department of Field Operations provided manpower, equipment, and technical expertise during the demolition of structures located on the Saulcat property at three seventeen and three twenty-five Lake Street. Um, the structures on the property were composed of various metals. I've attached an itemized receipt to your packets, uh, that lists all of them. Um, and it resulted in a, we provided it to Donovan Salvage Works, and it resulted in a payment, uh, to the City of Salisbury in the amount of three thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty cents. And I'm requesting that, uh, funds recovered be transferred from the general fund revenue to the City of Salisbury's, uh, or, excuse me, the Department of Field Operations' roadwork operating account.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
No.
No.
That's a nice chunk of change.
Yes, it is.
We had other projects in the work that we assumed would, we would have salvageable material from, but it didn't come to fruition yet.
Okay.
Well, that's very resourceful. We appreciate it. The city appreciates that.
Everybody okay with placing this on Monday's agenda?
Yes.
All right. Have a good day. All right, uh, next up is ordinance to amend the FY twenty-three general fund budget to appropriate funds to Salisbury Fire Department's operating budget. Deputy Chief Chris Obarski.
Good evening again, everyone. Yes, uh, a few weeks ago, our fire inspector vehicle was involved in a minor vehicle accident uh, while performing his normal duties. Uh, unfortunately, the at-fault driver, uh, their insurance company sent the repair check to the city, which then the city then deposited. So we're asking for the twelve hundred and nineteen dollars to come back to our general fund for the repairs.
Uh, nope.
Everybody was okay? Nobody was hurt?
Yeah, everybody was good.
All right, that's good to hear.
Yes.
All right, uh, everybody okay with placing this on Monday's agenda?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, next up is a discussion about shopping carts and vagrants. Was Ron, I know he was involved in the discussion about legislation. Uh, well, this is all in the city. Or do we not have any information on it?
I've got a little bit of information on it if we want to chat. But really, it's an overall discussion. Uh, what has been brought to our attention, um, that people wanted to find out if we wanted to have further legislation was, um, essentially the abandonment of shopping carts. There's a lot of shopping carts that are being removed from shopping centers or grocery stores and being abandoned in other residential places. We are citing, um, the property owners for the carts that have been now left on their property or residential or commercial property. And, uh, and, and they have some concerns that, um, the citation is being misplaced. It should be on the property owner of the cart to be able to regulate and, and control the removal of their carts more effectively. We have a lot of, um, even people with a, you know, parcels of properties that are just abandoned properties are not, and you'll just find them there. They're getting cited. And so this has come to our attention that, um, they want us to discuss either different regulations or harsher penalties on the owners of the carts potentially. So just kind of open for more of a discussion for us. Before we start looking at legislation, is there any interest in exploring this further?
Um, I, I know Fruitland does this, so if you're a retailer and you're shopping carts, because they end up all over town, uh, they, they fine the retailer twenty-five dollars per cart. Uh, and so that's, I know Fruitland does do it. Um, I know that there are some other towns, cities around the state that have similar legislation.
So you're saying they fine Walmart?
Mm-hmm.
For their carts being, for somebody else stealing your carts off your property?
So what's happening is, uh, let's use the Walmart as an example. Um, I take Walmart's cart from there. I take it to another place and abandon it on somebody else's property. That other property is being cited for the shopping cart, um, to dispose of that cart. They are arguing that, um, that should be Walmart, it should be the ones that, um, should be handling and managing their carts, not, um, where they're being abandoned.
But that's hard. I mean, that's really hard. How do you, how do you manage someone taking carts from your store?
We hire somebody to go around town and, and pick them up. That's what we do.
You hire somebody to pick them up?
Because you're going to Fruitland right now. You're Fruitland Walmart.
We have somebody that, that we have that does that.
Well, how do you know where they're at?
They end up in people's yards. They end up in the park. They end up at Hampton Inn. They end up, same thing with Food Line.
Well, let me say this. Why don't we see people, when we see people walking with shopping carts, why don't we find them? Because I know you see it, because I see it every day.
If the Fruitland police see them, they do handle it.
Yeah, they should be fined. If you're taking a shopping cart from somebody's, um, business, then the person who has that shopping cart should be fined. Because they tell you right there, do not take the shopping carts off the property.
It's considered theft.
So that could be looked at several different ways.
On a property that say, do not remove, and there's an ordinance that it cites. So, but that's what they do in Fruitland.
So if the shopping cart ends up in my property, basically you're saying I owe twenty-five dollars?
Uh, that twenty-five dollars is a number that Muir came up with. You are cited for the shopping cart, and then it's a corrective action letter. Our code enforcement will cite you, and you will be responsible for returning or disposing of that. So a lot of landlords and some other people are, have issues with having that become their problem.
That's not fine.
Yes, no, sir. No, sir.
That's not good.
No, I, 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 we gotta do something with the shopping carts. I get it. But if a shopping cart ends up in my property, which it has, I didn't put it there. I didn't bring it there. Um, and then now I'm going to be charged twenty-five dollars because it ended up in my property, and then I have to dispose of it on top of it. No. So we need to think of something else. I mean, I, I understand it's a problem, and I understand we need to figure something out. But I don't think that if a shopping cart ends up in, on my property, that I, I get fined and I'm personally responsible. I didn't bring the shopping cart there. I didn't invite it.
Yes, so, um, as, as part of this kind of conversation, you know, a lot of properties become dumping grounds for, for waste, but at least a mattress, et cetera. With the shopping cart, we typically can find out the origin of that shopping cart. So the question being, should the fine go back, like in Fruitland, to the place of origin? Or should it be passed on, because currently it's passed on to wherever the cart is found?
I know in some places they have, uh, like, uh, like a rod or something, where you think of the shopping cart out the door. Um, and then other places, there's a grocery store that has, like, you pay a coin to get a cart, then you can return it and get your coin back. Um, and you don't see those carts. Those are the carts you do not see. There's, I mean, there's got to be, um, what, what does Walmart do to, outside of say that this is, don't take our cart? Do they do anything to keep the carts floating around?
If we see some, well, if we, if we see somebody, we try to prevent them from taking it if they're, but we're not allowed to go after people, we're not allowed to pass the sidewalk in, in, in recovering merchandise when somebody has possession of it.
I know it sound, may sound some stupid to call the cops for it, but it's still theft, however you look at it. They took something that didn't belong to them, and I see it every day. Every single day I see it. So I know if I see it, the police see it. So if you see, I, I know people have to get their groceries to and fro, and especially if you're walking, but then buy a shopping cart. Buy the, the two-wheel shopping cart. But don't take somebody else's belongings off their property. That's theft.
What other, where else do we, what other, outside of Fruitland with the twenty-five dollars fee? Where, what other city has this, where there's?
I think other municipalities. I think the question really, because with it being a discussion, we haven't done a whole bunch of homework, is if there's an interest in, in us presenting you with some options, we can do the work to, to come back and actually do a full presentation, um, and explain, hey, here's what some other people are doing. Here are some opportunities. If it is something that we would like to, um, cite or find the place of origin, we can go down that path further. So if you'd like more information, we can come back with a, a full presentation and some proposed legislation.
I'd like for it to be put out there. If you take a cart off somebody's property, you're going to be fined. You're going to be fined, not the, the, um, retailer or not the person whose yard it is. And not, not unless it's been proven fact that it was put in that yard by some, one of the tenants there. But I don't think that it's fair that we do, that we penalize the retailer because it's already told, don't take it off of their property. I just don't think that's fair.
I'm, uh, sending everybody, uh, La Plata's, uh, ordinance.
Send the message, do not remove.
I, I think I, I would go forward with looking at research options and things and present us with some options. I do see where it's a big issue and, um, and sometimes they're in the middle of the street and stuff, and it becomes a hazard. It's a, it's a, it's a safety issue, too. They end up, you know, in places that, you know, crosswalks, uh, roadways. So it, I don't, I don't know what the solution is. But I, I, I would agree with researching and looking at some options.
Everybody's, uh, La Plata has a similar ordinance, uh, that Fruitland has, and theirs is a pretty good ordinance. But still, it's, it's the, the property of the retailer. And, you know, as, as, as stuff gathers up, they, they should regularly retrieve their property. There's, there's avenues for that. You know, they can hire people to do it that-
But how about if you don't know where they are?
Uh, we have somebody that-
GPSing?
Well, we don't have that, but we have somebody that rides around Fruitland that looks for them.
It's not funny, but I'm serious.
No, the person that we hire that does it, he drives around the city of Fruitland. He, he does it a couple of times a month, and when he sees them, he picks them up and he brings them back, and we pay them.
Like they do the, um, scooters.
So I guess it's worth, uh, at least looking at some potential legislation and, and getting some other input, so.
Okay, I will, um, pass that on to Ron and folks, and we will add this to another agenda.
All right, next item on, Michelle, did you, is, was she able to, are we able to hear her?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, Michelle, you, she's coming through on my computer. Go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't say, that's awesome. I'm glad I can find you here.
She good?
She's good.
Okay.
We had a, a second part of it, just shopping carts. There's a second.
Vagrants? I don't know what the vagrant thing was about.
What's the vagrant?
I think the discussion, um, I'm not sure who is taking the shopping carts. Um, so again, uh, I think this was just a general comment. I'm not sure about the second half of that piece, so.
I, I know when we discussed it last time, uh, Ron, Ron was here, so. But, okay, because I think he mentioned something else, and that's, so, okay. All right, next item on the agenda is a discussion for the labor code. And so this will be, turn this over to our city attorney, Ashley Boucher.
Okay, included in the agenda packet, the labor code wasn't revised to reflect the change in ranks, which had been agreed upon in terms of fire and police. So that just, um, was an oversight, but that was a, a decision at the last meeting. Um, my understanding was you wanted more information about terms and conditions of employment. And I did a little research to report back to you. Um, the Department of Labor defines terms and conditions of employment as all aspects of the employment relationship between an employee and his or her employer, including but not limited to hiring, compensation, fringe benefits, leave policies, job placement, work environment, work-related rules, work assignments, training and education, and opportunities for promotion. Additionally, there is a couple of decisions that are reflected specific to Maryland case law involving unions and, um, across the bridge with their firefighters. Um, in a decision called Atkinson versus Anarundel County. It was back in twenty eighteen. There, the firefighter union argued that a reduction in staffing levels and accrued vacation leave were disputes that involve terms and conditions of employment. That was, um, within the context of the city charter. The, um, and there was also a, a subsequent case talking about retirement benefits. The city council wanted to retain discretion to say that they were the arbiters of what constituted terms and conditions so that they were non-negotiable. And the appellate court held that, um, all of those issues were subject to, fell under the umbrella of terms and conditions of employment. So I know you, Ms. Blake, or Councilman Blake, had questions about what it included, and it virtually includes everything.
And the, the labor code now was, is it correct? Is the?
As it's drafted now, the, the scope of the subjects were, um, wages, hours, and let me get to uniform and dress code and promotional schedules and training. If councilor so were inclined, um, the intent for wages and hours is more inclusive in terms of it would include, like parental leave, it includes overtime, holidays. So it's not just specific in terms of pay, um, but we could elaborate on what hours and wages included. But at this point, it still does not include the language that I know we heard, um, at the last meeting about, quote, "other terms and conditions of employment."
Looks, and I got one more question. Let me look at something. Was it, was there a correction by chance with, um? I know there was a big thing about what was management employee to say assist, assistant chief? Or does it still say cap? Is it, that's corrected?
That has been corrected.
Okay.
I think the only thing that still frankly may be a little ambiguous is with respect to the general government. And I believe the administration was trying to put together a chart on that. I'm not sure where we are with that. Do we have the chart?
We have a chart. Um, it can be included as an exhibit. Um, again, the way that we have it set up is department heads and deputy directors. Those official titles. And then the superintendent of the wastewater treatment plant and the superintendent of the water treatment plant. Because we see those two positions as deputy director level positions.
Um, my, my only comment at this point, I mean, we have a heavy lift with the budget. The labor code is a heavy lift. We've been through this before with a budget issue, when we get hit with too many things at once. And we've been criticized, past and present, for doing too many things at once. I just want to be mindful of sometimes we just need to slow it down. There's no reason why we can't table labor code until we get this budget, uh, thing more wrapped up. This budget is a significant heavy lift, and we're asking the public to be a part of this heavy, heavy, heavy lift. And I think to give both things the rightful due and the rightful process, we need to kind of separate it out a little bit and, and be mindful that too much at once, I, I don't want to make-
It's overwhelming.
It, it's overwhelming, and I think that we need to look at, I know the budget has deadlines right now, right now on us. The labor code does not. It's more flexible, and when we, and we look at that. I, I really think we need to get this budget under wraps. This is my opinion. I just want to be mindful, and I want to give the public their due in being a part of this heavy lift with this budget. This is, this is a very serious situation going on, and they're both very serious. And I think they both deserve their separate process and discussion. That's my thought. That's just me.
I agree with Angela. Um, it is a bit overwhelming. And I think the separation of both of them should take place because we have to stay focused on the actual budget. We have a timeline for that. We have to get that done. Then we're, have the labor code. And yes, we want to do right by the employees. We really do. But we can't do two things at one time. And we're not, we're human. We're city councils. We're sitting in these seats. We represent the quorum. But we have to, you have to have patience with us, just as well as we have patience with you all. And it is ti, it is time-consuming. It is overwhelming, very overwhelming. And we discuss it. We talk. We do everything we should do. But just give us a, give us some, give us some time. We're not saying that we're not going to do whatever you ask for, but we're not saying that we are, but we need to process it. And that's all we're asking is for a fair shake to process this because we are hitting constituents with an enormous amount of money, fees. We have no help from the county. No help. And I see nobody going to the county. They're coming to us. But nobody's running to the county. Well, the county plays a big part in this, too.
No one's crossed them out.
No, nobody's gotten the flak. They haven't gotten the flak like we've gotten the flak. And we're doing the best we can to make sure that you all get what is needed.
Yeah, and I also, in, in, in piggybacking with that, is I would also be mindful of, of the labor code is also, you know, be mind, go, go to the county, county also. Go to their meetings and, and put, put, put that on their, uh, agenda for you to speak to because they're a part of, um, bo, both the problem, and they need to be part of the solution. And, um, I just think the budget right now, um, our constituents are telling us clearly that this is a big heavy lift, and we've had to go back and rethink multiple things. Um, if we don't get this budget intact, those six to eight percent raises, boom. Whatever else was in there, boom. So we got to find a balance, and we got to do one thing at a time. That's my thought. Do we need to?
Michelle, do you have any comments? Michelle, you there?
Can you hear us?
She went out.
Sorry, I didn't realize I was muted. Um, yeah, so I feel like we've been working on this labor code for far longer than we've been working on the budget. We've had these discussions over and over and over ad nauseam. I do not see why we cannot walk and chew gum at the same time. But, you know, as long as it is not going to interfere with the timeline of getting this done on time by the end of the year, I don't mind postponing it for a couple of weeks. I don't know if the language of tabling is the correct language. But, you know, if we want to postpone it for a couple of weeks, I'm fine with that until we get the budget done. But we should be done with the budget by the end of, what, next month at the latest? And I just, I do not want to put it off so that it impacts any kind of timeline. I am, I'm also going to put my two cents in on adding the other terms and conditions, I think those should be added. I think those are standard in any kind of union contract and I know we're doing a lot at once, but if we're going to do it, we better do it right. And I feel like that language should be added in there. I'm going to advocate for that once again, as I, as I have consistently. I would like to see us get all of this done. But I understand that, you know, some other, some of the other members of the council are not comfortable doing that. As long as it does not impact the timeline, I don't object to it. But I would like to see us get them as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Michelle. So since we have at least two members of the council that want to table this for a later date, we will table this discussion until we're through with where we think we're going to be with the budget, so.
So for clarification, right now, the first reading is set for May 8th, are we just removing it from the agenda?
We don't have consensus, so, yes, we will be. We don't during, we don't typically do public comments during our work session. That's generally either public hearings or at our legislative sessions. I mean, sometimes we do, but we didn't have it, I don't know if council wants to hear from anybody to speak, that's, if they're okay with that.
Doesn't matter to me, they have a right to.
You do have forums?
Yeah, doesn't matter.
We'll take a few minutes and people can fill out forums and then we'll, we're going to go to administration and council comments and then once people fill out, we'll give them some time to fill out, the public comment forum we'll do, we'll add public comments in.
And you know, it's not a part of being able to chew gum and walk at the same time, it's about doing things in decency and in order and being accurate. That's what it's about, it's about being accurate, not making stupid mistakes that we're going to regret later on down the line, that's what it's about.
So now we will go to administration comments, Mr. Mayor.
I have no comments at this time, thank you.
Council comments, Mrs. Gregory?
No comments, apologies for not being there in person, guys, I just, you know, could not seem to get my back to work today.
That happens.
Driving was out of the question, but I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person.
Ms. Jackson?
I don't really know what to say, I'm just sorry that it came to this, but it takes a lot to run a city. You just don't run a city by reading something or coming to a meeting. A city is, is, is complicated, very complicated. Workers, we're not saying we're not going to do what you need, we're not saying that. But just give us some time to really evaluate this and make sure we're doing the right thing. Something that you all down, later on down the line, won't have to pay for, that's all we're asking. Because sometimes what we do and what has been done has affected the way this government has been run. So just be mindful of that, that's all we ask, you just give us some time to do the, the actual budget and then work on the labor code. And I, we're not saying that we won't be working on it or we won't be going through it. But it won't be such of a rush for us to try to get both of them done at the same time. If y'all were sitting in our seats and you had to look at these budgets and you had to look at what we're going through right now, I think you would be saying the same thing. Thank you.
I just want to say that, a couple of things like with the budget, like, you know, we've really got to get this budget, we've got to get these, we've got to figure this out to give the raises that the workers deserve, that our public safety, our first responders certainly deserve. And that is the priority. Without getting this budget hammered out and down, nobody will get a raise, nobody will get any, we'll have to cut, 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 cut. We'll have to, there'll be tons of mistakes, it'll be a mess. I don't want to make this budget a mess, it's already, it's already complicated, there's no point in making it worse. I just want to be very, very, very diligent and walk through the budget process to get the max and, and to get everything we can get. And the promises for the, the raises alone. So, I mean, I think, I think the council, the sitting council has, has, especially this whole year, has been beating the drum for this. So now we're at the point where we get it and then we've been cussed out for it. So, you know, we're just going to step back, you've told us to step back, so we are. So we appreciate you being patient with us. And by all means, if you're healthy enough, donate blood, be an organ donor, one pint of blood can save up to three lives. Please, if you're healthy enough, donate blood, thank you.
Ms. Blake, I don't have any comments at this time, so we'll go ahead and go to public comments. That's fine.
Hi, thank you so much again for letting us speak, I know that maybe it's abnormal to let us speak at a working session, sorry. I saw that last time that we were able to share our views. I'm Sybilla Ali, I'm with ASME Council III. You know, I've been, again, working with the workers here, both in a coalition with fire and police, but also with the general government employees. And today's really a perfect day honestly to talk about collective bargaining because it's May Day, which is International Workers' Day. And so discussing expanding collective bargaining rights, but also, you know, from fighting for the eight-hour workday to something as simple, but also, as you said, just a little bit challenging sometimes as expanding collective bargaining rights to its full capacity. It's just a really important day in history to acknowledge that. So I know, and Ashley said this, when we left the last meeting, people were really wondering, you know, about these working conditions and what's considered, you know, included in the code as it exists and how do you bridge the gap between what I think basically all the workers in your city are looking for, which is other terms and conditions of employment. So working conditions include, again, health and safety, union vehicles like labor management committee meetings, grievances, equipment, parental leave, leave, contracting out, discipline, discharge, recall rights, career paths, and many other things. So like I think Ashley mentioned, it is basically anything that is a term and condition of your employment as it falls into your working life. So workers of the city aren't really looking to change the entire landscape of, like, through collective bargaining, what they're wanting is a voice in their workplace, not to overhaul an entire system. Much of what is, you know, typically inside a collective bargaining agreement is included in your handbook, which I know you just revised and have spent a lot of time and energy doing that. But what workers are asking for is to help codify that and put it inside a union contract. And then over time, that contract can be responsive and improved through, you know, their tenure and through future administration's tenure here at the city. One of the things I have, because I do hear what the council members are saying, where, you know, this is hard, but, and maybe it's a little bit new. But we have a few amendments that we've been working through with fire and police and general government as to what can be adjusted in the code. Again, right, we're not going to get everything we want, I think everybody is really clear about that. But the things that are really important to us, we've tried to outline for you all and make notes pretty systematically, going through the code as it exists and then really underlying, literally underlying, where we would like to see the expansion or at least modifications in the labor code as it exists. And those include terms and conditions of employment, the bargaining unit composition, the timeline for collective bargaining, and just a few other language cleanups in there. While the most important piece right now is working conditions, considering that you all just said that you were going to expand the bargaining units the way police and fire are looking for, I think that makes sense. But even if you pull out health insurance because of the consortium that you all are in, I think that makes sense to most of the workers here at the city. Enabling collective bargaining rights shouldn't be about moving backwards for worker rights. And we really don't want the city of Salisbury to be the lowest common denominator across the state of Maryland when it comes to collective bargaining rights. Nobody's looking at the city and saying that you all shouldn't be setting the standard or at least meeting the standard for what collective bargaining looks like everywhere else. And that includes from local level all the way to the state. You know, we're really looking, you know, for you all's leadership in this. And I think that as council, you all have unanimously supported the path to collective bargaining. And so we're looking for also your support in a very traditional way to have comprehensive collective bargaining rights. But thank you so much, I know some of your staff are interested in talking, we won't take a lot of time. But really appreciate the time you are taking and we are available to answer questions and also walk through some of the points, maybe making it easier for you so that, not walking and chewing gum, but maybe it is easier to at least have us help inform the code because this is what we do every day. And so we've seen and worked with a lot of other cities and counties and the state. And so we are just very familiar with it, very happy to help you all kind of navigate that process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Hi, my name is Anissa Pierce Sessoms and I've been working for the state of Maryland for 13 years at Worcester County Health Department. I'm also the executive vice president for ASME Council III. I want to thank you all for allowing us to speak tonight. I wanted to share that this labor code is very near and dear to me because my brother works in the water department at the city. Through being a union member, an activist, a bargaining team member, executive board member, and among the other hats that I wear, I see how having a union at work helps with safety issues boosting morale between management and staff and overall making the workplace friendlier. As a state employee and a bargaining team member, I have seen and seen the give and take at the negotiation table and how it is key that everyone in the workplace has a voice. I can give you a recent example of when working conditions came up at my workplace. I was not feeling safe at my workplace because we didn't have cameras in the office. And the point of where people came into the office was a blind side to me. So we were starting to notice that people from the outside were coming in and several thefts were happening. I raised this problem with my director and she asked if I wanted to call a labor management committee, which is what staff and management use to work out concerns between their union contracts. We were able to solve my concern at the lowest level possible about the working conditions to remedy my concern. So everything was taken care of. We also talked about, you know, things as far as working conditions can be very minor and small when you're working on the same level, when management and staff are working on the same level together. This is why I feel that having a contract which would solidify the rights is so important. I'm urging you today to add working conditions to the labor codes so that all staff can have the same tools we do that we also use to help in our workplace, in our workplace on our concerns. I also want my brother to have the same rights that I do. So I thank you very much for listening to what I had to say, thank you.
You're welcome. What was your name again? I'm sorry.
Anissa Pierce Sessoms.
Okay.
Hi, my name's Steve Gravener, I work in the meter department. And I'm not up here to talk about money or anything like that. I, I just want to let you guys know that, that tabling this, no, no matter how long it's going to be, is, is, is going to be a kick to the morale of everybody that's been hoping for this to come about. And I've, I've been with the city for 18 years and I've seen people come in hoping for a career and within two years, they're so disappointed they can't wait to get out. And I've seen people that have been here for 32, 33 years that can't wait to retire because it's so bad. And that, that's just what you're going to do, you're going to make the employment here just so, so much worse. And people are just going to be so disappointed, morale's going to go even farther down than it is right now. And that just, I, I just want you guys to understand that. You know, if, it can't get any worse, but I think that's what you're going to make it, so, thanks for hearing me.
Can I say something? We didn't say that we were going to just not think about it, not do it, we just said that right now, let us get the budget and then we will do the labor code. So that's what we want you to understand, we didn't say that we weren't going to do the labor code. So let's understand that, we didn't say that. We just said, right now, let us get through the budget and then we will work on the labor code. And we have, what, to have the, the budget done? June 15th? So we're not saying we're not going to do it, we're, we're not saying that.
And you're, and you're sitting, sorry, and you're sitting council, we, we have been working tremendously to get the raises. I mean, if, we're not responsible and I'm not going to take on, we're, we're busting down the morale. If you want a raise, we need to get the budget taken care of first, that's priority one. And you know what?
Let's, let's not have a cross-talk, that's not, that's not appropriate.
Thank you, I, I've just had, I've just, I've been beaten up too much this week, sorry, sorry, but enough's enough, enough's enough.
Next up is Hannah.
I'm not putting up with that either. I'm going to tell you that now, I'm not going to part with that either. If you've got something else to say, you come back to the podium.
Angela, that's, that's.
No, you've got something else to say, you come back to the podium. When I speak, I speak in public, if you've got something to speak, you speak in public.
Okay, I said, did you ask for that job?
Did, did you ask for your job? Did you ask to be cussed out?
Let's.
No, but I get it every day.
Well, I'm not taking on this.
Angela, Angela.
I'm not taking on this crap.
Hannah, Hannah has the floor, so let's, Hannah?
Stop.
You have the floor.
Good afternoon, my name is Hannah Buchek, I'm a zookeeper at the Salisbury Zoo and also our animal welfare coordinator. I'm here, our veterinary technician, Ally, is also here. First, we want to thank you guys for agreeing to look at this in the first place. We want to thank you guys for.
Thank you.
We want to thank you for looking at the budget, our raises are incredibly important to us. I personally completely understand you saying you have so many things to work on at the same time. I feel, if you don't mind me saying, that many of us feel the same way. Many of us at this moment do feel as though with our working conditions here, we are doing many, many things at the same time. And I think one of the things that some people have been upset about, and obviously this is a touchy subject, is that we have, just like you guys been told, we're going to look at the labor code, they're going to look at the labor code. And there is not a timeline for us, like you guys have with the budget. And I was wondering if a timeline, it could exist or does exist, that we could look this, that we can bring back to our members or the staff members here at the city so that we can say, hey, they're tabling it to look at the budget, which is an incredibly important thing and we're all very, very excited about the raises, the potential raises. So I was wondering if there could potentially be a timeline?
Um, we'll, I'll let Andy go ahead.
No, I, the only thing, only comment I'll make is, as proposed, that can be voted on and approved at any moment. There is an indefinite timeline for additional changes because at this present moment, the executive branch does not have any interest in modifying the document for you. So when we get. So when we get through the budget, we can consider additional changes, additional discussions. But there is something that is available that I think is very fair and very forward-thinking already, that is available for vote at any time, but if that is not what you all are interested in doing and want further discussions, I don't have a timeline.
Okay. And then if you don't mind me adding one or two other things, just really quickly from, this is my first council meeting that I've ever been to, and I did not know that talking was going to be a part of it today or that it wasn't normally a part of it. But the other thing I wanted to add is, I'm so happy that wages and hours are in there because those are very important to us.
Yeah.
It is important to me and some of my coworkers that we do add some of those other terms of employment, some of those working conditions. As some of you are aware, the zoo is open 363 days a year. We are working 365, just like fire, just like police. We are out in all weather conditions. If there's a hurricane or a blizzard, sometimes we have to spend the night. So, in 2019, I was on a team that was hand-raising a baby sloth. That baby sloth had to be on skin-to-skin contact 24 hours a day, being fed every two hours for it to regulate body temperature, breathing, heart rate, and that's a working condition that doesn't exist in a lot of the rest of the city, which is why to me, having that part in there is important because our city is so diverse and we have so many different departments that all do different things. So I want to make sure it can stay open to all those different things that we all do. And then, the other thing that's important working condition, hours-wise, the arts business and culture department, which the zoo is so happy to be a part of, all has really weird hours. We don't do normal working hours. We do all the cool after-hours events, third Fridays, hops on the river, Earth Day. So that's something that's a little bit different, it's still hours, I get that, but it's a little bit different. And then, training for the zoo, at least, is a little bit different as well. To get to a comparable institution, guys, we are the only zoo focused on conservation and education within 67 miles. The nearest is Cape May. Maryland and Smithsonian are 87 miles away, which means training for us, which means networking. Unfortunately, we're not able to go to Berlin, we're not able to go to Easton, like many of our other departments that have similar departments in other cities. So, I just wanted to say that that's kind of why I wanted to talk and ask to potentially make sure that that is considered to be a part of the Labor Code, the timeline I wanted to ask about. And then, we'd, we'd really appreciate your support. I know Michelle said that she was in big support of working conditions and we'd really support, really appreciate, April, Mary, Angela, we'd really appreciate your, your support as well. So thank you so much for letting me talk today. Thank you for opening this discussion, even though it is such a touchy discussion, and thank you for working so hard on the budget. That's, that's an important one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Daniel.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Daniel Hill and I'm the vice president of the Salisbury Fire Fighters Local 4246. Ladies first, I want to say, I'm sorry that you feel attacked with the way that things have come about this evening. I mean, it's just, I, I can, I can sense the defensiveness. It's, it's not with you.
It's not been good, it's not been good.
And we understand that and we appreciate everything that's going on. This is the first year that I've had, I don't know if I'd call it a privilege or a curse, of having the backseat view of what actually happens with government and where I currently sit. I now have a greater understanding than I ever wanted to have of what all goes into you guys doing what you do for us. I think the discouragement that you're catching from us this evening is the fact, February 15th, we sat right in this room with a collective bargaining meeting with, at that time, former city administrator Julia Glantz, current city administrator Mr. Kitzro, Mayor Heath, Ms. Buche. It was made clear then that other terms and conditions were non-negotiable. That is something that while, and I've said it before on this floor, it doesn't have to appear in the Labor Code. You can pass it without it. I can tell you for fire, we will not sign a collective bargaining agreement that falls without that provision. It will look absolutely distasteful if the three bargaining units that sit before you tonight in an election year tell the city constituents, I don't want what you're selling. It leaves us open to extreme liabilities. The greatest fear that everyone I talk to right now is losing our retirement, which Ms. Buche said in the last session, is as simple as a stroke of a pen. All it takes is for the city to move in a different direction and we are out of the odds. We have no legal recourse to prevent the city, because she said retirements are not protected.
I said if you were vested, you.
Vested. 65% of our employees are not vested. So when I stand before you and I say that it is a fear, it is a very real fear. And then we get to where former Mayor Jake Day, not here to defend himself, promised fire and police this would be done for this budget year. Why? Because the original provision said that we were going to have a one-year contract with renewals beyond that being two. The city, without discussion, without discretion, and without any kind of consideration for the employees, omitted that provision and went to a two-year, freestanding. So if this doesn't get struck by this budget year, I understand June 15, you have to have the budget passed. You're not going to be able to get your readings in, your amendments, all of the resolutions to meet a July 1 deadline, which means we will not be able to renegotiate for two budget cycles on the bargaining agreement that is there. That is why we are so hard in getting it in for this budget year. That's why we are stepping on the gas, and I know you guys are feeling the pressure from it, but to delay this any longer is probably going to put you at a timeline where you won't be able to meet the promises that were given to us. The city continually comes to us year after year, and I know that I'm talking to newer administration and you are not to fault for former administration shortfalls, but we have continually been asked to do more with less and we have rose to the occasion and we've fulfilled our obligations. And every year, the administration turns their back on us and ignores us once they get what they want. This is the last year that happens. And I only say that because I have a list in my book over there of 13 individuals who are actively looking for other employment. And if we don't get what has been promised to us, I can assure you, mine will be 14. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mark Thomas.
Can I say something before he speaks?
This is.
No, 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 I'm not, it's nothing derogatory, it's nothing like that, because I'm not even that way, so don't, don't do that. All I want to say is, this council has fought hard for you this, this, this year, the year bef, as the year is coming. We have fought to get where we are today and to get you where you are today. And we have done that. We have worked with you toe-to-toe. And like I said, no one ever said that we were tabling this or not getting this done before you need it done, or before you think you need it done. Okay? We're, we're not saying that. That's not what we're saying. We're just saying, let us get this done and then... Do y'all have a deadline on, on the Labor Code? Do you all?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Okay.
But my, my point for reference was, is if an agreement cannot be reached collectively amongst the council and the mayor for the budget all the way through to midnight on June 15, there is not enough time left with the way that you would have to follow your policies and procedures to get the Labor Code through. Especially if we're going to still hit a point of contention over other terms and conditions.
Believe me, we have you.
And that was my point. I wasn't, like I said, I wasn't trying to pump the turbo.
Yeah, we have you. Don't, don't, don't.
Even, even if we would, just for point of clarification, even if we pass the Labor Code now and, and on the schedule, it's not going to be negotiable in this budget session. You wouldn't be negotiating until next fall.
Exactly.
That's correct, but our, our time would start with this budget instead of it being delayed one budget session.